Thank you for all the work, right? Because this is a tremendous amount of work, just even to put a memo like this together, to think of all these ideas, and also for your role in helping with the Economic Development Committee. So thank you for that. Four is a no brainer for me. The facade program, my only question on that one is, if you know, unrelated to this, who has taken advantage of it?
I don't have the names of the businesses in front of me. They're available.
Through the chair, I can answer that. 111 Main, the Brunner Property.
The what?
Sorry?
I didn't hear.
111 Main, the Brunner Property. That's some improvement, that's historic house. The McCormick Property at 112 Main has been approved. And the Schlitzstein Property, Fiskin Main, at 62 Main Street. They've all now completely gone through the approval process. We had very detailed plans of what they planned to do with these houses, especially given two of them being historic. And they submit detailed budget requests for the improvements, and we found half of that. I think it came to just short of $15,000. And we're very happy with their approach and with the hope to be able to afford the results.
I got the second two. What was the first one? I got McCormick and Fiskin Main. What was the first one?
111 Main, Brunner Property.
I don't know what that is.
The Brunner is the first or second, it used to be the dress shop, antique dress shop.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Got it. Thank you. Okay. So that's great with that one, got it. West Upton Visioning Project, my questions on that are more around, right? Like when we did downtown here, it was because we had the church to figure out, we owned a bunch of property, we owned the ballpark, the parking area and the playground. And so there was sort of a, that's what brought us to the state of like, hey, there's a lot of opportunity here, we should do this. I totally agree that it would be great to have a vision for West Upton. So it's not that we shouldn't at all, it's more, do you see as much opportunity there? Because it's all developed, there's current business owners, there's already investors going into that space that have sort of bought up that one corner. You know, maybe the gas stations come or go in those little parcels, but otherwise, there's not open space. I know there's the conservation land behind Coach Road, so is that what you're talking about?
Oh, thanks for that pitch. One of the focal points of the housing production plan. There's no question we need to identify areas for high density, multifamily and affordable house. And one of the ones that keeps on coming up at every meeting is, Laura, help me with the name of...
Yes, it's referred to, I think it's the Hotel Pleasant or Pleasant Woods. It is directly behind Coach Road. It's about 35, 38 acres. It is in conservation. And what the Housing Production Plan feels, with Joe's assistance and Michael's assistance, it is protected land, but now you can do a like kind swap. So we could take a piece of property that the town owns, that's available for development, say on the outskirts of town, and swap it into conservation and then lift the conservation restriction. So yes, what the Housing Production Plan, I mean, I'll spill the beans. What we've said is that would be a perfect spot for mixed use development. You know, shops down the bottom, living area up top. Personally, if somebody could replace Coach Road with something handicap accessible and updated with exciting things like air conditioning, I think it would be a great boon for our seniors. You know, so yes, I think that's what Jean's talking about. And that is in one of our visions for West Upton.
Was what I wanted to confirm and validate.
In addition to that, Maple Street, you know, what happens with Maple House is part of this too. West Upton isn't just Main Street. And I think that we need to look at it, just as we did here, from a little distance off of 142. But I do think there's lots of opportunities there, not just this one.
Yeah, love it, great.
Well, the town owns 100 acres up in North Street.
Excellent. To swap the conservation restriction. That's an appropriate, that's a very appropriate rate of being...
Thanks.
Exactly.
Does, and that's been the focus of it. And I think that's preliminarily, conservation has been queried and they seem to be in agreement.
Again, you know, to circle back on building public consensus, that's a very sensitive issue. There's no question doing anything with conservation land is extremely sensitive. And we're going to have to build consensus around that kind of activity. It needs to be done in a public forum and it needs to be inclusive.
Yep. One thing to think about too, and is this part of that? This is probably, I'm sure you're covering this with the Housing Production Plan, right? If we have to accommodate that MBTA community requirement, the land up off of North Ave would meet the requirement because it would be close to the Westboro commuter rail. So I'm sure you guys are looking at that as well.
I think my understanding breadth is, as an MBTA community, they really want it focused kind of like downtown and with water sewer. So it doesn't necessarily have to be on North Street. We just need...
No, we need the space to designate the areas.
Right, so we're kind of hoping that the mixed use development, the denser right there where the services are. And the roads can handle the traffic because I can't say North Street would handle the traffic.
No, and I'm not necessarily advocating for that. I just know that there are sort of limited options that we have as a town to designate areas for this kind of development that aren't already developed.
And that was one of the things...
To me, it's right up there with putting, you know, these 150 or 200 unit apartment buildings in the middle of these roads.
I agree, and that was what the Housing Production Plan touched on. You know, it was identified in 11 as a perfect spot. It is a perfect spot, you know, nobody wants it in their backyard, but at least the road and the infrastructure can handle it there.
And there's access off Warren Street and where the Coach Road apartments are. Thank you, great. And then the only question I had on the number one with the Anrad is, is there any potential implication for other, like if we're looking at, I know we have a workshop to talk about Holy Angels. Is there any implication like of doing an Anrad with any potential restoration, renovation, preservation or anything like that? Like sort of once you do it, then that triggers something else or some other kind of restriction. I just want to make sure we're not having any unintended consequences and limiting our options with other projects.
I mean, that's a really good question, something to be aware of. I mean, one of the things is that we're essentially waiting until we find out about the grant to really start to pull things together. So that gives us some time to start to have those community discussions. But also, you're already dealing with the area that is identified as developed and we're not dealing with the wrong. So it already has certain amount of disturbance that all we're doing is basically quantify where the edge is, where some of the existing deteriorated are. And it doesn't prevent anything from happening that happens to expand a footprint of what's there. So I'm not really worried about it all of a sudden getting in the way of the hit or essentially creating a new regulatory footprint that then cuts us off from doing anything else.
You'd have to do it any... Before you change anything. And if you're keeping everything in the same footprint and otherwise, then...
And there's a lot of disturbance that's clouded. And that's where, because it's already a disturbed site, this has historically been, it's not, we're not always picking, you know, a natural scenic area where it has no disturbance.
Yeah.
This is already areas that have stone channels that are coming in from, you know, what is next to Holy Angels, the Garment Building. So it's already has fair amount of disturbance within that immediate area.
Yep. And then another question, is this similar to the sort of ARPA money? Where like this is a memo, it's a guide, we're sort of earmarking money, but to your point, there's more research to be done before it's spent? Or is this sort of like, once we decide in both, it's, this is it?
So we can amend the contract. And that's one of those things that as we lay things out, the state wants to be able to have a good understanding of what we're dealing with it. But even, you know, with, as an example, last year, just as we were having the change in the town manager, we were awarded Mark IV Fire Station, HBA. With all the stuff going on, we weren't able to get that work done. Gave them a call and said, hey, we need an extension. They're like, well, let's just do an extension for the whole year. So it gives us a lot of breathing room. The state on these types of things is very willing to work with us. They just want to know, do you have a plan? What are you going to do? And doesn't meet the goals for which this was set? So we all of a sudden say, you know what? We did not get this grant, but we drafted this contract because of this.
Yeah.
Or if the cost came in less, we want to been under this, use these things, we're able to go.
Or if we find out next week that there's some issue with doing an Anrad, that we want to wait for some reason or whatever, we can always do that. So that's amazing. Great.
No pressures, I think it's a good idea. We can't move forward with downtown until it's done.
Did have none on there.
Will that $45,000 cover the pollination?
I believe so.
Oh, is there, so this is, you know, the facade one is obviously like, right? That's money that's going to make a visible improvement. You know, the other three are plans and, you know, analysis. Is there, are there other things or other opportunities to actually put the money to work to yield some? And I, look, I'm a planner, I get it. I know that like, these are all the first steps and things that are very important and I totally value that. I'm just wondering if there's a way to put a lot more into something.
I'd like really to see, what a view of, I don't know, number one.
Yeah.
That Anrad is a piece of this.
Yeah.
What would be ideal is get to the point from the perspective of, and they're not going to be bid documents.
Yeah.
But where the parking, there's a preliminary engineering, a layout, you know, design of some... Maybe it's going to be, you know, a thousand foot.
Yeah.
Let her live, but then we have something tangible to show. Not just, as I said, not just an Anrad.
Exactly, yeah, just sticks in the ground.
Pollination, but what will that parking lot look like?
Right, right. If we could get a visualization of the pedestrian bridge in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be one of the hopes to get at. And I would honestly try to focus a good bit of the money.
Yeah.
Again, it's how good we are at doing as much of the work internally as we can.
Yeah. It's great to get a grant like this and to be able to use the money and do all this great stuff that we wouldn't otherwise be getting to. So awesome, that's it, thank you.
So one last thing, I just want to give credit where credit is due. And this is a large part of what we see here is through the day of Ross, the past chair, and the work that he did with the company, and both Michael and the work that he's done. You know, bringing, having a professional town planner, professional town manager at times changed what we get done, how fast we get done and how well we got it done tremendously.
Good, thank you for that. Yep.
For the board, if there's agreement and consensus on this, the next step would be technically for me to draft a contract language and come back to the board for your consideration of that final document.
For all four of these?
All four.
Yes.
Yeah.
And again, it's something that we're going to be able to amend. Like I said, if all of a sudden we find that we go out and we're looking to do the West Upton and all of a sudden it's like coming in at 35, we can reallocate things where we find out we need more. So it is, as you said, it is living because, you know, it's great to be able to have. It's like 125 is odd, but at the same time, it's not.
It allows us to give that plan to the state to like, yep.
Right.
We're, we've got a plan, we're on it, leave us.
So the board would have to execute the contract with the state. So you'll have one more look at this.
Okay. Great.
Do you have a motion?
I move that the board approve the economic development priority projects identified by the Economic Development Committee and authorize the town manager to execute necessary contracts for funding with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I demand this action. Thank you for all the hard work. On the agenda, we have review and approval of Maple Ave sidewalk project scope of work. I wanted to pass this one over until we get a chance to talk with Dr. Fitzgerald. It's, I should say, Fitzgerald. Regarding the BBT land. We haven't even talked to him yet.
Does this involve BBT land?
Yes. So I did talk with Dennis because when I first saw this, I was like, this is pretty much the design work.
Well, we asked for feasibility, an estimate for feasibility study.
And so he said, well, the engineers had already sort of taken a look. It's like, yeah, this will work. It's straight, there's really no wetlands. There's one corner of a property where we may need to either get an easement or design around. So Dennis said they felt that this was pretty straightforward from an engineering standpoint. So, you know, sometimes when you do a feasibility, it's like, okay, will this work? Yeah, this will work. It's all straight land. Town owns half of what the route would be. And the other half is adjacent to the railroad, adjacent to BBT, on BBT land. And that's where it's like, okay, well, and we do need to talk to Dr. Fitzpatrick. And I did reach out, I'm waiting for a response to say, at your convenience, it is summer. Though I drive by BBT every single day, there's a lot of cars there.
Maybe we'll call summer.
So I'm hoping we're not dealing with much of a delay, but we did want to reach out to talk to him because also then, BBT had reached out to us about potential use of town land as well. And I think we need to have a discussion of both of those sort of in tandem because we don't want to sort of ask for something and then turn around and say, well, now we want this.
There'd be an easement involved in that.
There would need, they would need to grant an easement, exactly.
I was taken aback by this because the other... Almost 280,000.
Yeah.
That's awful. How many feet, 1,500 feet?
Yeah, so this basically would be the whole kit and caboodle, including assisting with grant administration, regen for grants, right away, bid services and construction. So you're looking at about a third of this is after developing final plans. You know, that preliminary plans are basically coming in at about 65. So this is really almost like a buffet table of services, all totaling to the 195. And, you know, we don't, we may decide not to proceed after task two.
What was in it? What was included in the 280,000?
That was permitting, that did not include construction, fee services, because that was so far out. You know, who knows what would be necessary for that? That was that right of way acquisition costs were not included in that 280, that they would have to identify that as part of the design portion. And it did include environmental permitting within that 280 as well. So as was discussed before, that 280 would have increased for then the whole construction management and things like right away acquisitions and any takings. And here, it's basically, this would be the cost to go through or return.
Well, could I have a motion that we pass over this for now until our table, until we have a discussion with Dr. Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick observations or questions. So it looks like it's theoretically possible to do it without any easement on BBT because Maple Ave goes, or Maplewood Cemetery goes from Pleasant Street to Victoria Drive.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we own a direct line of Victoria. Okay, so we're thinking we just need him because we want to cross here?
The idea was to come through here.
To what?
To come through here. This portion. So you have essentially, I know it looks tighter here.
I don't think you're looking at the right spot. This sounds the railroad.
Exactly.
Okay.
So the idea would need to connect out here rather than coming. And that is sort of an option to sort of come down.
People walking along the train tracks to here.
So, I mean, along the right of the railroad right of way, but on BBT land. So that's the first concept. As we get into areas right in here, we're on the other side of that cemetery road.
Yeah, and that's a weird thing because it's cross-country stuff. That's in the middle of nowhere. Like, I wouldn't think you'd probably would love that. Yeah.
The existing traffic goes essentially goes through that back field and they go through the woods and connect over to Victoria. That's the sort of trail that's in there.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't think that solves our problem. So I, any of this, but, okay.
But we can have that, by the time we have our meeting in August, I know we would have had that conversation. And then we can bring Dennis back and have a broader conversation as far as, okay, well, we do have two ways to go. Why are they making an assumption it can only be through here? Why can't it go through that cemetery land, as you just mentioned? And we can get a little bit more information from them on that.
Okay.
We have a motion to table through, when, August meeting?
Yeah, August 22nd, or it could be the first meeting in September. I'll be in touch with all of you as far as what the results of the meeting with our... We made anyways. And I'll follow up with Dennis to say, to find out exactly what they were.
Why they went over.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it doesn't solve the problem for them. The Nip kids are still going to be walking along Maple Ave.
Yeah.
They're not going to go all the way up to the train tracks to go back along the train tracks to go to Victoria Drive, they'll just walk on Maple Ave.
Retaining wall issues. Now, they put in a sidewalk, I should rip the scope off. Out of the scope was retaining laws.
I think there was a...
I just mean from a directional perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, a sidewalk too.
Let me just follow up with Dennis, I think because...
What are the retaining walls for?
I don't know, it's in the scope.
Oh, okay, I, okay. So that's a different issue?
Issue, I don't know. I'll follow up with Dennis and we'll get clarification.
All right. They get a motion to table until August 22nd?
I make a motion, we table the review and approval of the Maple Ave sidewalk project scope of work until August 22nd meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Designation as surplus equipment.
Okay, so we have two pieces of equipment. Ordinarily would be waiting for us to pull together a larger list to then bring in from our board. But we have two things that really just want to get rid of. One is the old van, as the board knows. There were safety constructs with the van and we took it off the road. Right now, it's sitting at the old senior center. We just want to be able to get authorization from the board to identify that surplus so we can dispose of it. The second is a business printer service copier, business fax. It was the Land Use. It really, it was something we owned and was getting fairly old. It's not a desktop, it's yay big, yay big. And from the update community center building project, we had to acquire a business copier for the architect, the OPM and all that. That now is living next door, so we want to just be able to get rid of it. And anything of some form of value, we have to then identify surplus. So just looking for authorization on these two items. So we can just get rid of it and get the copier out of the hallway where it is downstairs or the van out of, in front of Mill House.
Mill House, okay.
And we will be disposing these pursuant to Mass General law 32B Uniform Agreement Act.
Okay. I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good. Good. I move that the board vote to designate the former 2010 senior center van and the Land Use and Inspeccional Services copier printer as surplus equipment and authorize for their disposition pursuant to Mass General law 32B Uniform Agreement Act.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I make this action. Review of Merced lease renewal from Memorial School.
So back over the winter, I was approached by the superintendent that we technically had not had an active lease agreement between the town and Mendon Upden Regional School District for two and a half years. It was brought to the district's attention in one of their financial audits. So, lease renewal. Language is extremely similar to the last one. The board has seen some iterations, basically just trying to reflect what is there now. The previous lease was for 20 years and expired a couple of years ago. So this would go for another 20 years. And we hope that in 20 years future, our replacements will all remember a timely fact. The, what you have in front of you is the final version with town council's final recommendations. She had originally said she'd try to get them to me by the end of the week. That's why the motion where it says like pending, or in my email I said pending, town councils, like legal, this is it. And the board was copied on the email from Jay Byer from Mendon Regional School District saying it's all set with those changes.
Right.
So, yeah, the biggest, the new ad is in blue, where we added language referring to current practices associated with the Howard R. Leland Baseball Field and Howard R. Leland Athletic Complex, whether or not people know them as such, not quite sure. But those fields we maintain, we irrigate, they pay for the bill. We see pesticide fertilize and do fall cleanup. We also, because the fields and the courts are lit, we also do pay for replacing the lights because we do run programs with recreation on those. But that's the limit as far as any other sort of larger capital expense that is non-regular maintenance, that would be something that would be brought by the district. So that's really the substantial change that you see here compared to the last lease.
Any questions?
No questions from them.
Good to me.
Take a motion.
I move that the board vote to execute the lease agreement between the town of Upton and the Mendon Upton Regional School District for the premises known as Memorial School.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I demand this action.
Well, people are saying, people have been around this myself and Mark, you know that field.
Yes.
I was going to say, I know it as Leland Fields.
Yeah, you'll be coming to town.
My gosh, that's a big sign on the field, maybe a little sign, there's a sign. A long way to go.
And I didn't see any maintenance.
No.
Okay.
Did we want to talk about item 5E?
The Discussion of Family Medical Leave Act and Paid Family Medical Leave.
Yeah.
We did a little bit, I guess we can.
I thought that was two.
No, that was, that was...
The Finance Committee. So it just came to my attention in talking to Joe sort of what the limitations were of these things. And it just struck me, in today's environment and in this day and age where we're trying to not only support families and individuals and people, but also as a way of differentiating that, you know, the current maternity leave benefit is, and I know there's a lot sort of wrapped up with the Family Medical Leave Act and paid family medical leave, so I didn't know. I wanted to sort of bring it up with, you know, my fellow board members to see what your thoughts are. Right, to me, like, not having, you know, holding a woman's job for her is like, that's not helpful. Like, yeah, thanks, I'm having a family and you're holding my job pat on the back. Saying to somebody, you're going to pay them 80% of their salary? Also not helpful, like, I'm having a baby, my bills aren't going down. Like, how are you paying me 80% of my salary? How is that helpful? And then just the duration, right? Like this four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks business, it's just... And then just the duration, right? Like this four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks business. It's just. I was just shocked and found it. And I mean, I get it, right? Like, we've evolved in a. Man's world for a long time and and, you know, these things have a lot of legacy and history to why the policies are set up this way. I think it's ridiculous. Not just for the town, but generally as a country, we have some, it's getting better. But the reason I wanted to bring it up with the board was to advocate for, you know, like twelve weeks of leave, hundred percent paid, a hundred percent of salary. Whatever, however that, whatever that package looks like, like. I don't care if it's a combination of paid medical family leave, something else, or there's other ways to fund it. I have no idea. But rather than trying to sort of shoehorn, oh, here's what we, you know, there's a lot of analysis involved. And I would love as a board to just give Joe some guidance that says, as a board, we think that. Women and families should have twelve weeks of paid maternity leave or paternity leave. Or maternity leave in this case, we'll just leave it at that at a hundred percent. However, we make that happen. Great. But let's, and and obviously that wouldn't be done without town meeting.
Right.
Without it coming back to us to see what the implications are, what it would cost and talking to finance committee. Like, I get all of that. So anyway, that's my perspective.
My opinion would be not just, um, maternity leave. As someone who had a child that was terminally ill. I was self-employed. I mean, those are things you do not plan for. Um, I can tell you when the governor breaker passed in eighteen, I have always been self-employed. I am still self-employed. I'm an independent contractor at a realty association. And every time we sell something, we contribute to this so that it will cover us as independent contractors. I think it's a humanitarian issue. I think we need to figure out how to do it, especially in a world we're in today with inflation is through the roof. And where you're trying to keep your good employees.
Yeah.
You know, so we don't want somebody going to a private sector because they have this and we don't. So I think we should study it, Joe. Like I said, not just for maternity, but for the family leave as well. Whether it be a parent, a child, a spouse, someone. I mean.
Yeah.
These are things you do not plan for. And when you're in the midst of it, the last thing you want to hear is, oh, by the way, you're not going to get paid.
Right. Or you got to take your vacation and you're going to get eighty percent and you got to do these mental gymnastics to figure out how to fill the gap and cover. It's like. It it just is. Anyway, so.
And and that's where, and that's where, you know, I totally understand, um, you know, if someone is dealing with, um, a a family member that, um. They need to to support and like. Say they had cancer and that there's, they're the only one that really can support them, bringing them to doctor's appointments and all those things. Um, you know, that's one of those things that as manager, you know, breaks your heart to then know that, well, when it comes down to. Whether or not a short term disability, it then doesn't qualify. And, um, it's, uh, totally worthwhile looking at going through the analysis because. Um, with, uh, PFML, uh. There are formulas on what percent it covers and there's ways that we can mix it and match. And Sandy's reached out to our insurance carriers to start to get some of that information. Um, you know, because it may be one of those things that, um, you know, even employees want to chip in. So for example, in my last town. I, the town did not cover short term disability. They had a, um, uh, it was cheap, wasn't much on the paycheck. But it was something that I think, um. And a lot of towns do that, um, but, you know, Upton is is generous and not doing that. There's most likely a lot of other towns also cover it because it is in. Their interest and their employees' interest as well. Paid family medical leave opens that up to broader things that are also covered under Family Medical Leave Act. Just don't qualify for standard, um, uh, short term disability. And it totally is is worth looking at. So that we fully understand. Um, and, um. When we look at retaining hiring people. We don't want to necessarily be out there saying, well, we're going to pay top dollar, but have crappy benefits, you know? If we can have something that is more of a value, sometimes that's why it's more attractive than all sudden just a top dollar. Um, and we have to do that level of analysis. Anyways, there are different ways we can be creative. There's private plans that Sandy was finding out about. So, um, you know, uh. Paying a family medical leave would require an opt-in vote of town meeting. So right there, we know we need to do some level of analysis. Get bought to get, uh, I and also present that analysis to boards like the finance committee, you know, and also employees because it would have an effect on benefits and with the unions as well. So there's a lot of work, not only just getting our hands around it. Um, because right off, looking at the numbers, you're not, you know, you can say, well, realistically, there's not a big difference between thirty seven thousand and twenty five thousand.
Is that what it would be for a hundred percent?
No, it's not. It doesn't cover one hundred percent. Um, that's what the contribution for, uh, paid medical, uh, paid family medical leave would be. Uh, that would be if we paid the full amount. There's, we can, and this is what Sandy's looking into. Uh, that there are private plans like the this short term disability that is. Uh, uh, PFML, uh. Oriented to to do that gap. So it is broader than standard, uh, from short term.
So it's a private plan in that the town would purchase a separate plan. Or insurance, not that the employees would have to get it privately, but that the town would get it on all employees' behalf as a private insurance.
It goes through, uh, well, if you're collecting from the employees, it has to go through all the payroll, correct?
Yep.
And they have to file their quarterly on the BM.
Yeah. And just, and again, this is all part of, like, my my goal would be to not have employees pay additional for it, but that's. You know, we can, that's part of the analysis. And I think, you know. When we talk about paid medical leave and paid family and medical leave, like, I think part of the, it it sounds like analysis. I I get nervous on here too. So I get what you're saying, is, right, like, it's, that's not sufficient, right? Because neither of those provides twelve weeks of one hundred percent coverage. So I think the analysis is. What's the most, what's the most cost effective way for us to ensure that our employees have the benefits that they need, want and deserve and that we want them to have? Like. Twelve weeks of a hundred percent paid maternity leave, like coverage if you have a sick or ill family member or an injury or what have you. So.
So you you would get that.
I was gonna say injury segment. So but I think it's sick, sick family, children, adoption, you know, whatever, whatever that process looks like.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
So, uh, hopefully keep the board updated. Like I said, we're already reaching out to, uh, uh. Find out, uh, more and what options are out there. Um, and, you know, we'll report forward and again, um. From a timing perspective, um, uh, there's some things that we'd have to be mindful of, you know, town meeting, whether it's a special town meeting annual. Um, because there would be budgetary impacts, um, and it'll be after just budgets or or do it as part of that five, you do contracts as well. That then, um, we'll start negotiating, um, next year. So there's a lot of these things. It actually is not a bad time to make this conversation.
Right.
Thank you. It's my cue. Sorry. Apologies. Thank you very much.
Think that's it.
Can we have a moment?
Mm hmm.
Uh, my name is John Solomon. I live on the Leupold Farm Street and I've been a resident here in town since nineteen seventy nine. Uh, most recently, I was employed at, uh, the town of Upton. Senior boss. And, uh, on my third, I submitted a letter, uh, I was having great many concerns with the operation and the running of the senior center. And at that point in time, I tried to figure out how to get the word, uh, people here at town hall, all these concerns. And I submitted a form letter. Any error of town hall webpage. Uh. It was addressed, Joe, and I had a series of emails going back and forth in regards to this, but I had heard from no one else. And, uh, I'd been away for the last couple of months, uh, so I was not able to check back in or follow up on anything, but. I come back and find that most of those concerns still there. Uh, a lot of things have come back up and are much moving and are worse than ever. And I I I'd just like to read you the letter. I don't know if any of you have seen that, uh, that it came up, but, uh, I am a very, I am very concerned.
I, we can't discuss personnel matters, though. About any employee.
Well, again, if you've got personnel on stack that, uh, safety hazard.
We have to go through the town manager who presenting it to us.
Exactly. So I'd love to, um, I'll be off on vacation next week, um, starting the twenty fourth. Um, whatever works with your schedule, come on down. We can talk. Anything that then, um, needs to be brought to the board's attention, as I have in other instances relating to this, I will bring to their attention. Many of which, um, we're also working to address now. Um, and I've held a number of meetings with people to look into this. Um, so it's all a work in progress. Um, but I'd invite you to come to town hall to talk about personnel related issues.
And also rush to shore that we've read the memo and we're familiar with all the information you've put in there. So it's not, not that we haven't seen it. It's not that we're not addressing it or aware of it. We're working with Joe. Um, and he'll continue. And he'll continue to to sort of work with you to try to address some.
Put this satisfied already, so I don't know. Sit down, we can talk. Find these here from town who also have concern. Unfortunately, our concerns are going to have to mention personnel. And again, I don't know that you're the right person to be directing them. There's, uh.
I am responsible.
So that is.
It's been disappointing so far, unfortunately.
Sorry to hear that, but it should go through the town manager who should be presenting it to the board.
Again, since you don't want to hear what we have to say, I hope, excuse my pants. I lost some weight on vacation.
Congratulations.
I'll be, I'll I'll just leave you with this. I need to refer to it. Again, it's nothing more than what was in the email. Joe, you already have a copy of this.
John, John, John.
Yeah, watch out.
Yes, the trip has.
We don't want to, safety hazard, I'm sure at a meeting, right?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Again. Ladies here, they would be hurt, I guess, if I could really face today.
Thank you for calling. Yes.
Well, I don't think we did. I'm confused with you. I may. And again, uh, I live here in town. My phone number's in the book. If anybody wants to consult me or ask me personal questions about this, you should, you should be concerned. Uh, again, Joe, we'll be in touch.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
And that is it.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.